I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck, the City Council Workshop for July nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin?
Here.
Muncie?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Gardner?
Lewis?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner intends to join us later. He's stuck in traffic at the moment. Do we have any agenda changes?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. We have no guest speakers today. That takes us to item five, public comment on agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and if anyone in the audience wishes to offer a public comment, please step forward. Don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to offer public comment on agenda items this afternoon? I see no hands raised. All right. That will close our first public comment period of the evening or the afternoon. And that takes us to our discussion items for our workshop. First item is Resolution two, three, zero, seven, two, four, dash, A, Investment Services. You'll find it on page two of your packet. Ryan, do you want to give us a little rundown on this?
Mr. Mayor, let's have Peter step up to the mic.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, so what's in front of you is basically, we haven't done this since two thousand and eighteen. Couple of the banks are pushing back because I've been just using the minutes when we elect a mayor, mayor pro temp, be the signatures with myself and the city manager. And so I looked, it was eighteen. I think the last name was Garnett, and I don't remember. So basically, it's just standard protocol. We need to really probably do it every time.
Okay.
And when the banks usually start, well, we don't have an updated one. It's been five years now, so. It's just basically, it lists all the banks that the city has a relationship with. And then it basically, who can get information from any of those banks is basically the mayor, the mayor pro temp, the city manager, and the finance director. And that's
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Hal.
Are there any new vendors or vendors that have been omitted, or are these all the same?
They're all, no, there's some of eighteen, or there's banks have been bought now before our bank was Shoreline, then it was Chemical, then it was TCF, and now it's Huntington, so.
Other than?
Yeah, the Daily Bank, the Cash Bank, and really, there's nothing added there that we don't have a relationship currently. They're just, they're all banks. And there are, the Michigan class really isn't a bank. It's basically a commercial paper organization that's a pool for all local cities, townships.
But no new vendors other than any consolidations? Okay, thank you.
Peter, it appears there's no change to authorize signatories, mayor, mayor pro temp, city manager, treasurer, correct? Okay, very good. All right. Anything else for Peter on this?
Do we have a copy of the last resolution in two thousand and eighteen? Is that around?
I could get it out. I just basically took that packet, there, updated the name of the banks.
Right, okay.
And then just.
Oh, so this is basically the same?
I mean, besides, some of the bank names changed in the number two, the names of the mayor, the pro temp, and the city manager, basically.
Oh, okay.
One other thing wasn't before, they would fax and stuff. Well, nobody faxes today. They want to not just fax. We still have a fax number that does work, but.
Okay, so it's the same form, just other than what needs to be changed to reflect the, okay.
Okay, great. Anything else for Peter on this one? No, thanks, Peter. Thanks, Peter. Next item is item B, hardscaping, heavy landscaping, right of way, page seven of our packets.
Mr. Mayor, we'll have Mr. Ryan Cummins address this one.
Excellent.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Beautiful day, but important to conduct the city's business too, right? So, so, you know, as you, you know, guys have certainly seen in my planning and zoning administrator report, at times we get complaints about folks at a place hardscaping into the city right of way. And so when we receive those complaints, we take a look and see if they've actually received some sort of a license or permit to do that. In cases where permit or license hasn't been granted, then we, you know, work on taking enforcement action to address the concerns. So, you know, the city certainly has a lot of ordinances that are a few different ordinances that cover hardscaping or even, you know, shrubs, maybe heavier landscaping being placed into the right of way. And certainly, there's a requirement that there'd be a license for that, but there's not a lot of clear guidance, policy guidance on maybe how those should be handled once, if those requests are received. Certainly, there's guidance on sidewalk seating or expanded outdoor dining. You guys have spent a lot of time kind of establishing a policy direction on that. The zoning ordinance has, you know, provisions that relate to signs being able to encroach into a right of way as long as there's a proper license that's issued. So there's a lot of considerations to kind of think about when we're talking about hardscaping and landscaping in the right of way. And so we kind of wanted to bring this to you to have kind of a general discussion. So if it's all right, I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney Chris Patterson.
One question. Is this mostly commercial or residential that you're having this issue?
So it's a combination. So we have certain situations, certainly in your downtown district where you can see various things are, you know, on your sidewalks and right of way. In some cases, those may have received past permits. In some cases, they're newer recently, and we've become aware of it, or either a complaint or through observation, we take care of it. And then some are actually private property. So we've had situations where folks have placed different boulders and rocks in that right of way area between maybe a sidewalk and a street. We had situations where folks have actually constructed entire kind of stone and brick walls on street, in the street right of way and street corners. So.
Thank you.
I also have a question. Are you planning on doing this on a case by case basis, or are you thinking of planning something that's a one size fits all kind of idea?
Well, I think that's exactly what Mr. Patterson wanted to touch on, is kind of two different buckets that we got to consider when it's kind of next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, good afternoon, Council. I think in the last, maybe it's been sixty or ninety days, we've been working on this issue with city staff, and it's sort of appraised itself in three different areas. So it came to our attention early on with a residential property that had a pre-existing, maybe quasi-approval. They had gone through a zoning approval process related to some setbacks. And in that sort of process of the zoning approval, there was a suggestion that they'd be able to expand at least some softscaping. They have some hardscaping on that property into the city's right of way. And then since then, we've had at least one other pre-existing situation that we've been advised of in our office. So you've got pre-existing licensees. They want to know if they can maintain that. We also have pre-existing individuals who have given that approval who want to expand or make alterations, and that would be potentially intensifying what's being built within that area in the city's right of way. So maybe now, currently, there's, could be pavers and sort of greenscape, and they would want to change that to move a fence maybe out to a portion that's on the city street. Or maybe instead of a fence, they would like to have some type of pond or a water feature. Or like, as Mr. Cummings noted, rocks or other items, especially since they're indicating they're kind of maintaining this greenscape. If you start narrowing the road at the corners, you've got people cutting the grass that they think they're watering. And so, you know, adding rocks or boulder features to really maintain automobiles inside of what currently is the improved surface of the city street, even though the actual legally described width of the city street would be bigger. In addition to that, in the same process, since you have people within that area, not only do we want to develop and have some understanding from the city council as to a policy on hardscaping as opposed to softscaping, greenscaping. In addition to that, of course, you have new people who would want to know as they develop in these same areas. If you cut them off at the property lines, there could be several feet that would be city space, and we have to come up with some solution as to how that could be maintained. When we, early on, when we got into the process, the first thing we kind of flagged was risk management. You know, there are some concerns that really it's a city right of way. There are specific provisions of the Governmental Torque Liability Act that apply if you are a municipality maintaining a roadway, and there's questions about placing these objects within the roadway. What kind of harm or liability do we bring to the city? So we did raise the issue with risk management. I would say the response was less than clear. It wasn't like it was black and white saying, you know, this is pretty problematic. They were certainly indicating that you would want to be careful about the size of objects you allowed to be placed in the right of way. You certainly would need to do so under a license, and their biggest thing was they basically said, like, maybe you could insure over it. You know, make these property owners, if they want to put an artifact in the roadway, to give you lots of insurance to basically cover that risk. That was one of the comments we got back. So I think, you know, our sort of concern as you proceed forward is not only the risk management piece. One, we want to treat everybody fairly, so we want to get some direction from council. You know, we don't, there's nothing in the ordinance. There's nothing that, that Mr. Cummings or I can do to sort of give them good direction on what would be appropriate for this body. And in addition to the risk piece, we do also just practical concerns. I think our experience has been at the office that if you were to give somebody a license, some, the, what, the initial one that came up, actually. I mean, they've had this for probably over a decade. So if you were to give them a license, they spend some money building improvements that's beyond just green space. Technically, the license is going to say that you would be allowed to give them notice and have them remove that, but I don't think that that's going to, that's not going to come without some pushback, right? If you just say that you are going to take back your entire unimproved surface, make it improved, widen the street, and you're asking them to now remove something that they've spent some money improving and then maintaining for a decade or whatever it is. I think there's a little bit of balance there as to what you would want someone to be able to invest and improve in your right of way. So we're bringing it obviously to a workshop to get some feedback. I think we're looking for just some, you know, our initial recommendation is that we would like council to allow us to prepare maybe a recommendation where we can fully assess the risk management piece, because I think if we were sitting in your seats, we don't know exactly how you tell us what to do without knowing what risk those options are. So we'd like basically, direction to allow Mr. Cummings in our office to develop what that recommendation would be, fully assessing the risk piece, and then sort of appreciating that there's pre-existing approvals that exist. There's those people who want to then expand what they currently have, maybe from green, green space to now hardscaping. And then what would we do if somebody came to us that they were building a new lot and they wanted to expand out into where the improved street surfaces? And we'd like to bring that back at a future meeting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I took the liberty to visit with residents that were here at our last board meeting with Express of this subject, if you remember, that bought a new house and, or their first time owners.
Simonson?
And I also went over there and took pictures of that area that had been built up that, like that for quite some time. And, and so that's why I had asked, you know, if we were going on a person-to-person type basis. I think there are instances, and I do believe that is one instance where I think that should be allowed. They should be allowed to keep that. I don't see how it's obstructive.
And I think our concern is less so telling somebody no. It's more, I mean, this body would have to approve it anyways. Nobody, we're not going to give them a license to necessarily be within the street. I think it's consistent with how you treated some of your outdoor uses. If they want to use sidewalk, we were here a couple of months ago saying we wanted to develop a sort of streamlined, consistent process for allowing people to have outdoor seating on your sidewalks, your streets. I think that's sort of the same avenue here. We wouldn't be telling somebody no. We would just be saying, look, here's an application for it. Here's some general rubric of a policy, and that would come here to council, or it would go to someone that you would designate with that authority. But I think to make that decision and decide what that policy and that form looks like, you need a little bit of further background information about what do all the scenarios look like in the city, and what's the, what's the risk management piece for you as to what liability are you taking on?
And if we ever needed to widen the streets, like you mentioned, or put sidewalks in, or put parking spaces in, we want to be able to still have access to the city-owned portion of that.
Correct.
I tend to agree that it, we should do some serious communication to the community, you know, over a fairly long period of time, so people can get used to the, these facts and plan accordingly. I know it's a, it's a huge issue where I live on the hill. I know it's a huge issue on Park Street. You know, and a lot of it goes directly toward parking. You know, people quite often in my neighborhood put in hardscaping to try to discourage people from parking on their grass. And, you know, that, that's a huge problem. We've got correspondence that we'll discuss later, you know, about the issues that we're having in some of our more congested residential neighborhoods of people parking on both sides of the street. Emergency vehicles are prohibited from getting through in some busy weekends. So I'm very much in favor of us doing this, and I, I am sympathetic to the folks on Simonson Street. I am sympathetic, but I do worry that we create a precedent if we, if we approach this in a ad hoc or piecemeal type manner. To me, it feels like we should create a uniform policy, things that could be permitted, things that are, you know, not allowed. I mean, and I would, you're probably already thinking this, but I would think bringing the DPW team superintendent Herbert into the equation on what, what does impact their ability to plow and collect yard waste and things of that nature versus what doesn't? You know, I mean, a lot of us try real hard to maintain the trees in the city's right of way, do things with landscaping that actually, and it's usually softer type landscaping to, you know, keep the community charming and beautiful. But you go ahead.
I'm sorry, questions on that. So it's typical that if you, there's easements, right? And so you're responsible for cutting the grass on an easement that is the city's right of way or keeping trees from being overgrown, and that's normal. So what is so different from this and something like zoning, where if you want something different for a separate use or, you know, building out a fence too high or whatever, how is this any different? Why wouldn't you just have to go before a zoning board?
Yeah, so the zoning context is really focused on the use, and then the structures that relate to that use that is within what's going to be defined as a lot of record in your, in your code. And a lot of record is going to be either platted lot, lot, recorded legal description meets and bounds, or it's going to be some area of more than one parcel, a combined set of parcels being used for the same use. All of those, though, end at the property line, right? And so once the, so particularly in some of the situations that we're talking about, it's not an easement in the sense that their property line is recorded to the center of road, and then the city's right of way is existing over it. Some of the documents that we've seen, the surveys that were presented that did go through the zoning process, survey shows the property line stopped, and then the city's right, the city owns the street. There's no easement, right? So they have full right entitlement to that area of the land. So the zoning process doesn't work once you get outside the property line, because that approvals for dealing with setbacks in structure development inside the property. This is, that's why I said this is kind of more akin to dealing with outdoor seating, letting picnic tables go on your sidewalks, et cetera. You're outside the envelope of the property that's under zoning. And so now you're sort of dealing with an ancillary license. Like, what is the scope of the right? You're going to let them have on your property?
The difference is someone can always take back a picnic table or whether if we don't like it there, but if they build out a retaining wall, we're not going to be convincing them to rip out fifty thousand dollars worth of the retaining.
Exactly our, that's kind of exactly our concern. Like, I think some stuff is probably not problematic. Like, I think one of the pictures that we saw, you know, they had greenscape all the way into where the actual improved portion of the city street was, and then there were flat cobbled sidewalks. So, I mean, I think you could easily tear that up in ten years. I don't know that they're going to be particular. I mean, they might have a problem with it, but I think it's not like investing in a fifty thousand. Our concern is like, some of the proposals to build, have, you know, like a architect or a landscaper come in and build a three-tiered waterfall with hard skip rocks and a fence. And now, you know, in ten years, you're asking somebody after they spent a hundred thousand dollars with contractors to remove it. So I, we think that there's a balance. I think we just, I mean, it's a balance for council to strike. It's a policy decision to give us some direction. That's why we'd like to come back with some recommendations.
Good afternoon. Sorry for arriving late. Does the city not have a policy around this? Not a clear one. Not a clear one? Okay, so this issue's been around about as long as parking has been around. This is nothing new. From my perspective, the absolute TR one is that the city property remains city property. There is no adverse possession. There is no, the city right of way is thirty-three foot off center of the center of the street for most of our streets. Anything that obscures that or goes into that can potentially cause a problem. I think in my mind, in my experience, what's really worked well for the city has been a consistent application of that policy, whether it's murky or not. A consistent year in and year out application. I think that's where Mr. Herbert and some others might have some experience on how best to address this. It just, it's one of those things with the city, like many other policies and procedures, it just has to be consistently applied. And if we're not doing that, then we need to get back on that track. You know, and, and where there's curbs, it takes away the issue, right? It's where you don't have curbs or things start to run into problems. And, you know, it's really evident. You can just drive around. You can look and see, okay, well, that's an evident attempt to keep a car off my, off city property. Other ones like the hardscapes, that happens because of result of, I think, of attention by the city. When something like that happens, there wasn't someone paying attention to it, and it got built. That's if it has to be addressed by us. So, but I think the absolute is that the city, to the mayor's comment, we have to be very consistent with our public. We have to be very considerate of our property owners. That city does not give up its right to the city right of way.
Period. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, Councilman, and I think to add to it, I mean, I think people should, I mean, I believe it's the will of this council, but tell me if it's not, that, that, you know, we do want to continue to make efforts to keep our residents and our visitors safe. And, you know, in many cases, they would benefit greatly from sidewalks in certain areas that don't have sidewalks. And that's going to be very unpopular in some parts of our community, but there's, you know, I'm not going to name names, but there's, there's a street that could very, very much benefit from a sidewalk and, you know, so I think we need to start to put the public on notice that, you know, in a nice way, I guess, in a way where they have some time to digest that the city, you know, does very, feel very strongly about maintaining what city property is and improving it for the benefit of the entire community. You know, and that's not, you know, it's not to pick winners and losers, but it is just the direction of the city. As, you know, we get, continue to have more businesses, more people, you know, we need to give them ways to move around safely, so. Anything else for council on this one?
That I would agree that we should have something from them to bring to us.
That's, yeah. Okay, great. We are now at HDC reappointment, page eight. This one, I think, is fairly self-explanatory. Ryan, do you need to flag this for us or not? It's, John wants to be reappointed. I think he's been.
Getting your exercise, so.
I just like making you come up.
So, yeah, so, yep, you have two vacancies on your historic district commission, or we'll have two vacancies of August first. Mr. Canarzo currently serves would like to be reappointed. We have an interview set with Ms. Godfrey on Tuesday, and then I've reached out to a prior applicant that we interviewed to see if she still has interest in being considered.
Sounds good. Anything on this? No, thanks. Next one, I think, is yours, Ryan. It's the AT&amp;T Wireless Proposal on page fifteen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do think we have somebody from AT&amp;T on the line, so they'll jump in at some point if needed. I will ask them not to be too technical, because last time I spoke with them, just talk to me at least, as if I'm like a ten-year-old child. So I'll start with this. I got an email from Ms. Lisa Mize that there were some issues with connectivity and wireless service over the last weekend. So it continues to be an issue. But I think it's just with AT&amp;T at this point. I think the Verizon small cell technology is working great. So I've, I've been in discussions with AT&amp;T for the last year about doing some downtown Wi-Fi. And I have some bullet points on page fifteen on why this would be a good idea. First one is, it's an option for business owners to have a point of sale, alternate, or total connectivity. So you got a lot of vendors out there that are doing business. If they're, they're using their Apple swipe, whenever you call that thing, or square, thank you, and they lose, they lose that connectivity, then they're, you know, then they have to write down people's credit card numbers or whatever they have to do. Two, the tourists take a lot of the bandwidth. This will take a lot of the bandwidth off the AT&amp;T cell towers in the region. So it will help, it'll help the whole region if you have the downtown Wi-Fi that people can connect to. And then I would recommend that you would gift the landing page for the Wi-Fi to the CBB, so people connect. They will get information from the CBB and where to go, what's open, what's closed, interurban, whatever. For in talks with AT&amp;T, they said, well, are you going to charge people for connectivity to the Wi-Fi? I said, no, this is, for me, this, I envision this more of a service to create a quality service for people, our tourists, to come here and be able to connect with their friends and family and emergency services as well, is always important. However, if the city wanted to consider charging a fee for Wi-Fi connectivity, they, they can certainly do that. So AT&amp;T has proposed to do a site assessment for the Wi-Fi at a cost of ten thousand dollars. And this information, once received, would not be proprietary, meaning like, we would know exactly what's going on in the city as far as like, any other vendor wanted to come in and do Wi-Fi. So we would just get all that information. So with that, if AT&amp;T is on the line, I would let, let them jump in, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Is that Brandon or? Or is it the number there?
Hopefully, they have a connection.
Is there anyone from AT&amp;T on the line that wishes to offer some additional context?
Ryan, can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Ryan?
Can I ask a question while we're waiting? So this would just be a site assessment for them to tell us what the charges would be to put this in. Do we have a ballpark figure? Just any idea at all?
So, good question. I asked the same. Is this going to be ten million dollars, one million dollars, one thousand dollars? And we, we really don't know right now. So.
So.
As far as like the.
How does this stack up against them improving the tower up at Mount Bald Head? Is it just timing for us to get this in right away versus, you know what I mean? So if they're going to do the improvements up at Mount Bald Head, that should ostensibly take some of the load off of what we're dealing with now. What would be the benefit of moving forward on something for AT&amp;T Wi-Fi when we've got this other project in?
Yeah, all the, sorry, yeah, good question. So all the, all the things that I listed with like the point of sale, like downtown, just taking bandwidth off the, even the new tower.
Even the new tower.
Yeah, even taking bandwidth off of that. So, you know, we have a good partnership with AT&amp;T right now, and this would be the first step. And again, the information is not proprietary, so we'll have it. And if we have to find a new vendor or somebody, some other creative solution for downtown Wi-Fi, if that's what you all.
If Verizon is working fine, about how much was the Verizon upgrade for the Wi-Fi?
They did that on their own.
But that wasn't Wi-Fi. Those were cell towers.
That's right.
Small cell technology.
I'm not, I'm not an expert, but my, I think, my thought, yeah, I think, I think the tower project for cell service and this, I'm not sure that there's much technology overlap. I'm not sure. Don't quote me on that. It's a shame we don't have the AT&amp;T rep on, but I, but I think when Ryan's describing the, taking the load off the cell system, I think it's, you know, people having the ability to toggle or their phones to automatically toggle over to Wi-Fi versus if you've ever been like in a place where like, you're, you're burning up data on your cell plan, but then, but then you get on the restaurant's Wi-Fi, and suddenly you're getting a lot, lot more, a lot faster, and you're not getting billed.
That makes a lot more sense.
I think, I, I've not, you know, don't quote me on that.
From a business person's perspective, we have our own Wi-Fi, but we can't let the public use it, or else our credit cards would be super slow to go through. So we just can never offer that to our, our people. So if that was something that was available within the downtown area, it would be really great to be able to offer to people. You know, just the whole using your data and all of that stuff. It's, it would be fantastic, and it would take.
Even I was just sitting in my backyard the other day, and my Wi-Fi wasn't connecting, and I had no cell service. It was only SOS only, like, just to sit out there and on the other side of the river. So, yeah.
So I have a question. Lauren, do you think that this is something that businesses would be open to paying for?
So businesses, I don't think the businesses would pay for that, but if, I don't know if you guys have been in other areas where they offer Wi-Fi within a city. Sometimes it's like a ninety-nine cent, and you just say yes. So it's one of those things, like, it wouldn't cost the user that much money. It could be pretty cheap, but think of the ten thousand people downtown that might do it.
They would do it.
And then all of a sudden, it might, so it's, it's an option, I think, and some people have used.
The user of the ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, and it could be something super cheap like that, you know?
I would be more comfortable knowing what the projected cost was before we spent ten thousand to see if we could do it. I mean, just so that we had some kind of ballpark. I mean, if it was ten million dollars, it's probably something we're not going to do. And then we're out ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, so they did answer that question. They're, and I said, I started with like a million. They're like, no, it's not going to be anything close to that. So it's going to be south. They don't know until they study our area, because they got to get telecom in here, and they got to figure out the whole network, so.
Ballpark, if they've done it in other cities, they should have some kind of.
We could get a ballpark before Monday. That way, we don't have to table it. We could, okay, we could have time to digest it.
I pressed for that question. They were just not. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. When I saw this, I'm super excited. I think this is something the community absolutely has been asking for, businesses. I mean, there's, to me, it's a, we need to figure out how to make this happen. But as I pulled back and started to look at it, and it's kind of thinking about some of the other things we've done with Verizon, and we have other carriers that are going to approach us, the city does not have a wireless communication strategy, and I really think that's important for us to think about, because great conversation today at council. We all have our experience.
great conversation today at council. We all have our experience with Wi-Fi and other communities and so forth. But ultimately, this is a public service that we're going to be providing. And whenever we have street work, or whenever we have legal work, or whenever we need professional services, we've got someone we go to to assist us to develop this. Nothing against AT&amp;T, but, you know, they're one company. And we should be thinking about this from a strategic standpoint of how do we develop this? What are our thoughts and ideas around how to make this happen? Who's working with us that is an expert in this area that can assist us and consult and provide feedback to us? Because I'm not an engineer. I've never actually developed a downtown Wi-Fi, so I'm dealing from a point of lack of information. That's why we rely on professionals that we have here for different topics. This falls in exactly the same category, in my opinion. That we should have someone walking with us through these discussions and helping develop a strategy around this. And more importantly, when we have individual projects, that person, person, company, whatever, is there to say, we have experience with this, here's some things you should be thinking about, or here's a different approach to take. And it's 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 agnostic as to the actual vendor that's approaching us. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It does. I'm wondering, though, you know, there is this interesting notion that the study is ours, not AT&amp;T's. So I wonder if this provides some of what you're what you're what you're getting at, because it would be our product. And I'm wondering who does it? You know, is it sort of, you know, a contractor that AT&amp;T and others use? That that then kind of doesn't sort of, you know, weight it one way or the other?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe it is a third party.
Okay, so.
What I.
Yeah, I just want to ask another question. Holland's been very proactive in this space. Do we know if they have public Wi-Fi? Does anybody know?
Well, I can I can tell you that Holland treats their Wi-Fi down basically as a public utility. And so they, in particular, have broadband available. I believe it's fiber.
Yep.
We had meetings about this during the pandemic. Because we've been working on this this long. And so all of their businesses have access. I think they paid, they paid like 70, $80 a month or something, but they had screaming fast. Into webs. It's quite nice. So to your point, yeah, it is. It is. It's interesting to think about it as a public utility. And I think probably since the pandemic, we are at a place and because we are tourist-based economy, it is something, you know, roping in the CBB that this is a public utility. I would I would like to commend Ryan for the way that he has handled all of this with AT&amp;T and with Verizon, because this has been such an important thing for everybody. What is your feeling going forward? Because I feel like you have had to work with all of these vendors. And you are sort of that person by default. So what is your feel on how to proceed?
Thank you. So I'm no expert. I did work on one project in Wisconsin for downtown Wi-Fi through a grant. And that's so that's my level of expertise. What I will say is Jill Dunham with the county has been working with us as well. She has really, really good expertise. This is, she worked with AT&amp;T. She knows way more than I do. And I say like, my recommendation is you got to start somewhere. And if you wanted to hire an outside consultant to come in and assist the city, you could do that, but I think it's going to delay things. But certainly an option. I mean, between Jill Dunham, AT&amp;T, through a third-party company, just to do this analysis, to understand the infrastructure and what's needed. I mean, we had a very in-depth conversation with AT&amp;T and the Wi-Fi team. Extremely boring for me because I don't speak their language. We talked about bringing in fiber from Holland, using their system. Since we're a government entity, and that that's one of the most important things is to actually take bandwidth off of AT&amp;T, off of Verizon, and if we could use the Holland fiber.
Which we have here.
And I just, they explained it to me as a glass pipe that comes in, but it's not AT&amp;T's, it's not Verizon. So then you have like a whole new system that you're working with. So it's up to you. If you wanted to get an outside consultant, certainly could do it. But I mean, I think this is a third party, and I think that's what they are. They're they're consultant. I would explore this.
I would I would really value, and I agree with everything Holly has said, you've done a great job with this and the Verizon and the other ongoing cellular stuff. Particularly when we talk about the grant piece, I would really love to hear from Jill and get a nod from her one way or the other. And I don't know if we have time before Monday, or if she can come and visit with us on Monday. I know we probably have a busy agenda. But, you know, I would be swayed if Jill said, you know, this is worth doing. This will help you get to where you're going strategy-wise, you know, if you do this. And all, and by the way, here's what I know about telecoms grants in the state and in the county that you could probably leverage, you know? Or she might say, this would not qualify, you know, this would this would not, or she might say this is tailor-made for a grant. Okay, so I don't know if that's.
Yeah, getting her advice would be fantastic, or at least hearing from her and asking questions.
She is a subject matter expert and a municipal employee.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And again, I'm not I'm not opposed to this. I'm not opposed to this idea. I just start to think about, we've got so many things coming down the pike that we don't even know. I mean, this technology is evolving constantly and, you know, going 4G, 5G, now they're advertising 10G, et cetera. So if the city was to step back and develop a strategy around how to develop these services to our visitors into our residents, I think that would probably make us more eligible for some possible funding. Because as it is right now, it feels very reactive, right? We've got a survey that said we want to improve cell communications. We've taken some action on that. But strategically, how would any of these proposals fit into a strategy that we have yet to develop? This is kind of my thought. And I'm not the first person to recommend consultants either. However, it's very clear just hearing comments around the table that none of us are real experts in this. We have ideas, we have thoughts, we have experiences, but we're not experts. So I'd be interested to hear from Jill, kind of what her thoughts are around this, but I think we should really be thinking strategic on this.
That's my. I have another thought. So when Bobby Gaunt last spoke to us, she talked about reaching out into the community when we were sort of bickering about events and costs. And she sort of, as she does, sort of in a macro sense, reminded us that there are people in our community that can do some of this heavy lifting. So which we also, Garn and I learned during the pandemic, because we had a few we working groups around this. We have people in our community that do have this knowledge base. And I don't I don't want to recommend more bureaucracy or another committee. But if it would be helpful to maybe identify two people in the community who might, you know, work with Jill or maybe sort of take some of that research piece that could assist. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Bobby sort of reminded me that we really have to remember, we have a deep bench.
Yeah, exactly, Mr. Mayor. I would I would say use your brain trust. Yeah, there are there are some experts in the area that work with AT&amp;T. And Jill Dunham, like I said, she's fantastic. So my takeaway is, let's see if we can get Jill here. Let's get a rough estimate of costs if we were to deploy this. And let's start there. Let's get, I would recommend we keep this discussion.
I think keep this live. I agree with with I think all the observations around the table. I think I think Jill is pretty key to this. She's presumably, even though it's a different county, she's plugged in with what Holland's doing in their utility approach with 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 the fiber. I think that's a good way to start. It's a shame that AT&amp;T couldn't join that. They might have been able to answer some of these questions, but.
We'll get them for Monday. We'll get them for Monday, for sure.
We made, I mean, how hot is this in terms of something that we need to action on Monday?
I think that's a good question. I was going to ask that.
Yeah, we've had our residents telling us multiple times now through our annual survey that this is a big issue. And, you know, we see our business owners talking about it, especially in the summer when we're so busy. This is important. I really don't want us to wait. I feel like we've made some good steps already with the Verizon cell towers. And if we can even baby steps are better than no steps. And for me, this, you know, this makes sense as a next kind of approach. And then include Jill, also have Jill come in and kind of begin to help us take a look at the bigger global picture. I think Holly and I learned that there's actually that fiber that has, because of the merit system with the school, that basically ends up there on Elizabeth. And to bring it down here to City Hall is, you know, something like thirty, you know, of course, this is three, four years ago. But, you know, 30 to $35,000 to run it the rest of the way down here. It was that simple. Simple, you know, but there's, I mean, it's, if if you think about the number of places that we have all traveled and the ability to be able to be connected. I hear it from our runners all the time. Do is there a strong Wi-Fi? Am I going to be able to do my work from here? I have to work from here. And that's so if we're going to remain a strong tourist economy, we need to be able to not only help our business owners, but also the tourists that come here to get some work done, too.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not envisioning, you know, tabling this until like our next strategy session in the winter. I don't think practically, you know, this is going to impact this summer. So I mean, I feel like we've got, I'm thinking more, you know, maybe another few weeks to talk about and to hear from a few other people and then sort of write and make a decision. I'm not I'm not saying let's kick it off to a committee that goes until next spring. Yeah, I'm sort of like, I just feel like I didn't get enough information from AT&amp;T today. I would really like to hear from Jill. Once again, the grants, the grant landscape is quite lush at the moment. If there's an opportunity that that also impacts our timing, I would like to know that.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree.
I mean, it seems entirely possible that, you know, something like this could be underwritten by a grant, you know, just even just even know the landscape and help us develop a strategy. So I mean, I'm not saying let's kick the can down the road by any stretch of imagination. I just don't think it's going to impact the summer based on what we've seen with other projects. So I'm thinking maybe, you know, maybe, you know, ask, get a few more smart people in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Context.
Yep. I certainly don't want to drag our heels on this either and want to keep keep the conversation going. But I don't want to rush into anything so that maybe we're making, you know, choices that probably aren't going to be good. So we've done that before and we've seen what happened.
All good. Do you feel you got some good feedback? Okay. Anything else on this? Um, okay. Okay, we here we go from some special events. First one off is item E, Special Event for Art in the Park, Saga Talk. That's on page twenty-four.
Mayor, I think I can help with this event. I started this project with Anna Donahue through Sedaba. And this has been going on for six years. She represents the West Michigan Artist Entrepreneurs, which are nonprofit. It's been a very popular event. She is very friendly and is careful not to step on the toes of the Saga Talk Douglas Art Club. We've gone out to dinner with them and they regularly communicate about their events with each other. And I think it'll be a fun event. It's been, it gets more successful every year.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Is this a nonprofit?
Yes, you'll see that it's a nonprofit. There's her tax ID right there.
Okay.
And you can go to their website as well. It's a Michigan or artist entrepreneur dot com, or I could send that to you.
Sounds good to me. Anything else on this one? Nope. Next event is the Special Event Labor Day Bridgewater Page Thirty-One. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. It's always a fun event.
Yep.
Has Community Rec always been in charge of that one?
Yeah.
Yes. Nice.
Any any thoughts, questions on this one? Go ahead.
The bathrooms going back and forth. They used to ferry people non-care.
Okay, great.
Stop that at the Labor Day, Labor Day Bridge up in.
I see.
Just a joke.
Yeah. Next, a special event, IG, is the Sidewalk and Studio Sale, page thirty-seven. Any questions on this one?
Just I just a real quick question. It's a great event. You know, I used to facilitate this up until about two years ago. Always had fun with it. Just to make sure that they have a current insurance, a copy of their current insurance liability. I understand that that'll be expired on August first. And just to make sure that we have a copy of that, because it's in the street and because of safety these days, we want to make sure that everyone's covered. And I also want to thank Anna Donahue for providing that as well. And that was also in the packet. So if we could double check to make sure that we have a current liability form.
Great.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on that. Last year's event, which is very similar to what we're looking at this year. I don't remember if it was the manager was downtown with me or Scott Herbert, someone was downtown. And remember, there were still barrels in the street. The street enclosures were still up. It was well past five o'clock and it was done. And there's no organizers that were there to remove those, which they're supposed to. So we just need to make sure we remind folks, you have some responsibility when your event's done, you have to remove that because there are people respecting it. And it was, I don't remember, were you there?
That was us.
Yeah, was that? Yeah.
So I think part of that, you need to have good contact information, like we have for Venetian, there are four contacts. You can take this person first, and between the four of us, you're going to get ahold of somebody.
Yeah, it's just.
It needs to be good contact information and.
Okay, just a reminder. Great. Got it. Thank you. Anything else on that one? That takes us to item H, Right-of-Way signage, SCA forty-two. Looks fairly self-explanatory. Anything on this one, folks? No, no. Okay. Another right-of-way signage, First Congregational Church, forty-five. Looks pretty standard stuff. Anything on this? No? All right. Great. We've made it to item J, Public Art Display. It's on page forty-eight. And we have someone here as well. Ryan, do you want to tee it up or should we just?
Um, yeah, I'll tee it up. Okay, so we have Mary Jo Lamansky here, who has been helping the city of Sagatuck with public art for a good number of years. And she does excellent work. And one of the things that she and I talked about was a damaged art piece in the Mize Rose Garden. And we actually were, Peter, thank you, we're actually able to go after insurance and recover some costs for that art piece. And Mary Jo, in turn, said, well, since we have some money for public art, let's get a new piece. And so she has a recommendation for the Parks and Public Works Committee to consider.
Thanks, Ryan. Just to give you a little bit of history, and you've got it in your packet there, this year's been a really good year for public sculpture. We've cleaned everything. We installed the new piece from Amaz, We Whispers. And the CBB has taken over the outdoor sculpture program, which has been a real relief for me. And also, we're working together as kind of a team. The other thing that is going to be happening soon through the CBB is there are going to be QR codes next to every sculpture. So if you look at this and think, I have no idea what this is, you're going to be able to QR code it and learn about the artist and that. So it's it's really hopefully becoming an educational component. And I think it speaks miles to being the art coast. You go to other cities, Grand Hab and Muskegon, they have these gargantuan sculptures there. And you want to know that in the city of Sagatuck Douglas and Fenville, that there is some presence of outdoor art. So I think for many years, it just kind of sat dead in the water. You know, it was, the sculptures were there, they were kind of, you'd walk by, you wouldn't even think of it. You'd look at it as another building. So this is a real concerted effort to bring up the sculptures to a level that people are going to appreciate them and also gain some knowledge. So unfortunately, Sean Philip Moran, who's a, he's a professor at Bowling Green University, well-known, nationally known, had two of the sculptures, his sculptures were purchased, one by the city of Sagatuck, one by the city of Douglas. And unfortunately, both of them were destroyed. The city of Douglas, the piece was actually decimated. It looked like somebody took a sledgehammer to it.
Wow.
And so they have approved a replacement piece with their insurance money. They're looking at raising some additional funds for that. The piece that was in the Rose Garden, which was called Empty Revisited, the piece was actually pushed over. And the cement block that was, or the granite block that was on there, it was on a cement block. I don't know how they got the pedestal off, but the granite piece cracked in two different places. And I'd sent pictures to Sean, and he said that, first of all, the Douglas one, there's no way they would have repaired it. And Sean said that the empty revisited could not be repaired without destroying the, you know, the integrity of the piece. So there is an act, it was passed in 1990. It's called the Visual Arts Rights Act. And it's an act. It's an actual. It's called the Visual Arts Rights Act and it's an act, um, uh, it's an actual government act that says. That um, uh, visual artists that are still alive. They are due to um, be able to have some say about the sculptures that are, are there and what happens um, to them. Um, when we contacted Sean about Empty Revisited, um, he said he immediately wanted it out of there. It does not reflect him as an artist. So it's actually in my yard waiting for him to come up, but it's. Um, and then of course, the other one was just destroyed. Um, but at the same point, and this is something I've seen in, in other um, public art collections. Um, and it's not necessarily a legal act, but it is um, it's out of respect for the artist. That if an artist is already in an art collection, a public art collection, and the piece has been damaged, um, there is. A level of um, respect for the sculptor to replace the piece of his in that collection. Um, you know, he was chosen for that collection. The piece itself was damaged and due to nothing. He did structurally, it was a resigned piece. So I talked with both city managers and they did go ahead and they got the um, the funds that they needed to um, get the insurance money. Both. Insurance um, companies did not, from what I know, did not give uh, any hassle with it. And so I asked Sean what he could show us that would be a replacement. Um, the works that he's been doing in the past have been stone um, pieces that he carves um, and, and you know, really manipulates the stone. Um, and since both of the pieces that were damaged were stone, I said, you know, maybe. As we think about replacements, we should go to something that is a different material. Uh, he just started working in welded steel. And um, he teaches at the University of Bowling Green. They told him that he couldn't even teach uh, the stone. Process anymore because of the um, the chemicals and fumes and all. So these uh, pieces that he has um. Recommended um, are uh, his uh, initial pieces into uh, welded steel. He has done some years ago, but this is his first um, few pieces that he's doing. So um, he's offered them at just an incredibly low price. Um, the piece that you're looking there, Canary in the Coal Mine. Um, is about, I believe it's eleven feet tall, yeah, high. And with the taller base, it could be even higher. And the price of it's forty-five hundred dollars. Um, you know, you'll never ever see a piece of this size at that price, but um. He's very eager to give you guys a good price so that he continues to be in the collection, knowing the limited budget. Um, it's a really bright sculpture, which as you walk around, a lot of the uh, current outdoor sculptures are fairly muted and the dead of winter, you can't. See anything because of the kind of a quiet sculpture palette. So this is, this is a really strong um, colorful piece. Uh, he will um, deliver it and install it for no cost, which is a big deal. Um, we would have to pay a mileage, but other than that, so. Economically, it's probably one of the best solutions you could have if you choose to replace his work in the collection. Um, on top of that, um, there's a really um, pertinent meaning to this piece. Um, it's called Canary in the Coal Mine. It's referenced um, to the coal miners in New England in the early nineteen hundreds that would actually literally take a canary. Into a coal mine. And if the carbon monoxide um, levels got high enough, the canary would die and then they all headed out of the coal mine. So uh, this piece has a contemporary um, message and it's about um, what's happening to our environment. And our air and uh, what's going on that we all need to be able to see more canaries or recognize. That the canary in the coal mine is here and that we continue to do what we're going to do. And he talks about endangered birds and all these different animals that are be, you know, that are no longer with us. That this is a, a real strong visual message to, hey, you guys better wake up and figure out what you're doing right now because. You know, the canary is probably going to be flown by and there's no way you're going to be able to save things. So I thought that was certainly considering all the things going on with the, the dunes and all these other developments and all. It could be a pertinent piece. Um, I don't know. It's not so blatant that people would walk up and, you know, gasp, but it's got a subtle message that I think could be really strong. Um, I gave you a little background on canaries because um, when you look at a canary, somebody said a canary is. Um, a native bird to Michigan and they aren't. Um, you can see a little bit about it. Um. The goldfinch is as close as we get and that is uh, a canary. So um, there is some reference to, you know, a bird that's similar to that. So if somebody were to say, why are we have canaries here? Most canaries now are uh, raised domestically and all, so um. So uh, there, I've, of some of those questions that you might ask, it's um. You know, out of all the sculptors and all the artists, why are we picking this sculpture? Um, first of all, it's respecting the sculptor that has been in this program. Um, second of all, it, as I said, it's going to bring energy and uh, brilliance to the, the area that. You know, we've got uh, Family of Man and uh, that's pretty much the brightest sculpture you've got. So you could bring a, a bright. Uh, yellow piece that would really um, create a, a visual focal point. Um, it's well-constructed. It's a, a nationally known artist. And as I said, the price is really great. And also it speaks to some of the environmental issues that are here. Uh, so that's the proposal. Um, I did just give you some, a sheet on some of the sites that I thought it might work. Um, one was Oval Beach, particularly thinking about the fragility of Lake Michigan. Um, the other was by Mount Baldhead over um, uh, heading up to on Park Street there. Um, I thought that would be another possible place. It could certainly relate to the, again, the, the landscape that's there, the delicate balance of the dunes and such. Uh, River Bluff Park, um, talks a little bit more about the forested areas in there. And then the last would be um, by the Sagatuck sign as you come in, which I think um, would be a powerful visual message as, as um, people come into town. I'll, any questions?
Well, I'll just start with a comment. Um, and I think I, I speak for the entire council. It's just, once again, a huge thank you. Uh, for not only coming out today, but for uh, how you facilitated whispers going into the Rose Garden. Uh, that has really. Been a tremendous addition to that park and I see people enjoying it every day. And so I, 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 I think I speak on behalf of all of us, uh, thank you for. Your ability to shepherd some of these projects through. Um, I love the message of this. I love the sculpture. Um, but I'll turn it over to the council for, for thoughts and I particularly lean on Helen and her thoughts of what parks and public works. Might think of such a.
So me personally, I think that it would be really beautiful at Oval Beach. You'd get a lot. I see, I understand by the sign, people would see it as they drive in, but at Oval Beach, I think it's a focal point where they would walk up to it, have a QR code. Read about it. Not, not many people stand at the, you know, Sagatuck sign of Blue Star and Holland. And just Oval Beach is going to get more um, uh, traffic even than Mount Baldhead. So I would like it in a place where people get to see it. Makes a big impact. And I just think that's, to me, it's a natural fit now. One, six people.
I, at first, when I saw the sculpture, I'm not a fan of it. You know, we all like art. Some people like art, some people don't. I love the. Most of the pieces that we have in town, but I don't like everything. Um, and just the, the style of it. Um, but now that Helen had mentioned that the location of it by Oval Beach, I think it's very complimentary of the Sagatuck. Sign going into Oval Beach and the bright yellow that you brought up in winter time. Um, I think that would be a great place for it. Um, I, real quick question, because I have to go. I have another appointment. I hate to leave early, but. Um, the CBB has taken over the care and maintenance of the public art. Is that all of the public art in uh. Uh, in Sagatuck, Fenville and Douglas? So you've taken that on, that, that uh, in the past, I'm asking Ryan now, in the past, have we paid for the cleaning of our. And the maintenance of our public art?
I don't think it's been cleaned.
No.
In ten years that they have not been.
Really? Wow.
There's been damage to some of the bronze because of that.
Yeah, yeah. I want to thank the CBB for taking that, that responsibility on. That's got to be quite a cost.
Actually, it's not that bad. Um, we have a sculptor from Kalamazoo that came and cleaned them this year. And what was the bill?
It was, it was like what, five hundred and less?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. And the um, DPW, thank you, them uh, cleaned all the bases and the pedestals. So um. For that low of a cost to um, keep those pieces cleaned and in good repair is, I think, just critical.
And I also want to thank you for bringing art back in our town. Um, I attempted to do this about uh, fifteen years ago. Um, uh, and our first installment was installed uh, without the uh, the uh, council's permission, but it was by the permission. But it was by the permission of our planning person at the time. Uh, council did not approve of it. I ended up having to take it down. And I was a little disheartened because we know that it was a program in our town before I tried to bring it back. Um, that was a very successful program. And I really, really appreciate, I admire everything that you've done to bring this back. What's that?
I said, I can't say it hasn't been a lot of work.
But I, I can tell, I know it has been. And, and uh, I really, really appreciate that.
So I'm not sure what the insurance money netted when you got the insurance. What, what money you got for the insurance for the um, the empty revisited? How much that actual cost was of. What you reimburse from the insurance?
Thank you. Peter, do you recall? The insurance was like four thousand or something? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds about right, but um, the challenge would be, of course, that the other money funds would have to be raised and. You know, I was a big fundraiser for a few years and I retired from that. So um, it would be um, something that the city council would have to look for. Um, funds for that, um, which would be um, another, another cost there. So um.
Other thoughts?
Well, I just want to say to Mary Jo Lemansky, thank you for being the godmother of art in our community. Um, you're, you are our um, resident expert in sort of keeping all of these things knit together and going. And I think. We've just learned the importance of uh, some minor costs for maintenance pays off in a, in a big way. And so.
Really does.
And I also want to thank Ryan again too, because this is something in the past that we haven't done. This is something that you did in Wisconsin and. Sort of making these connections with the community. Now we're elevating something that's very important to our community and that's on brand. And I would defer to Helen um, with the Parks Committee, but.
I'm no artist. I just kind of like.
You know, I, as an artist, I mean, I think, I think the, I would sort of echo your thoughts about the color and sort of, and sort of. That could be really fun.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, sort of make an impact and just sort of the background of. Knowing that these, that this artist's work was damaged and sort of the, you know, bring some sort of honor and. Um, re, sort of retribution or what's the word?
Recognition.
Recognition um, of what has happened and.
And I think that's very respectful. Artists, right. And you know, you look at the piece and it's, it's abstract. You know, people aren't going to go, oh my gosh, there's the canary. I can see it. And there's the, the coal mine. So. Um, that, there's some education that can go into that. So people will be able to appreciate it for what it is. Um, I think with more and more pieces in contemporary art, you're seeing much more of an abstract um, focus. So I think it's important that we keep up with that. Uh, there's a lot of realistic sculptures around here and that. Certainly had to reflect with the time they were chosen, but to stay in with a, a current art. Uh, kind of focus, I think that would be something you'd look at, so.
Did you have a thought?
Yeah, just um, I love the piece. It's beautiful. I love how vivid and bright it is. Um, I actually like it. This is just my opinion. But I would love to see it at the Sagatuck sign. Um, just because we have, you know, the palette sign is incredible. Um, this sign is just kind of. And it would give a whole lot of pizzazz, you know, coming into Sagatuck with, you know, a beautiful sculpture to go along with that. As you're coming into town, that's just my opinion. I think it would just really, you know, make that area nicer if we could, you know, show off some public art at that.
I'd like to see a whole other sign at that area.
Yeah.
Sign is sad to me.
But that's one way that it could, you know, really um, make that area look, look nicer. Um, but that's just one opinion.
No, I, I, that was my gut reaction is it would be a great addition to that very, very lonely Sagatuck sign. Um, I should probably though. Bring up the elephant or the giant canary in the room, uh, which is, you know. I have heard from some constituents that aren't happy about when we spend money on things like a light show, uh, when we spend money on legal fees. So right now, uh, it. I, I would sense we would get some pushback from the community on spending money on art. Um, Whispers was a no-brainer. You know, we had a broken piece and it was a donate, it was a donation. It was a very generous donation. I believe that piece is worth like, worth like twenty-five thousand dollars. This is an incredibly generous offer at this price. But I, I am concerned of the optics, to be honest, at this point of us doing it. If there's a way that we can find. Uh, public, a public-private partnership to get this done, uh, I, I, I would hope the artist would be okay with. The forty-five hundred coming from any entity.
Uh, yeah.
Is, you know, the, the.
It's not anything he's going to be.
Yeah.
Picky about. Forty-five hundred is forty-five hundred for him.
So that's my only hesitancy. I, I'm a hundred percent yes, love it. I would love it anywhere in this town. Like I said, I love the message about climate change. It's near and dear to my heart. I, I aesthetically, I love it. I'm just mindful that, that we are getting some. Comments on spending for non-essentials.
We, we found that um, there are organizations that if you were to write a grant. That it would be, that would be the most logical place to go, especially since you already have money to go into it. So. There is that um, that buy-in. If you were to ask for the whole forty-five hundred, they would be less likely to look at it. But um, you know, I can steer you in some um, places where uh, applying for a grant would make a lot of sense. Um, the Delano Foundation in, in uh, Kalamazoo um, gave um, Fenville um, five thousand dollars. For the piece that the um, reaching for the stars. So I think the fact that it's public art and it's appealing to people. Uh, you know, all ethnicities, all uh, you know, economic levels and all. It's much more likely you're going to get funding for something like that.
I know, I know you said you're sort of out of the fundraising game.
I'm totally out of it.
But would you be willing to help us to try to navigate this process?
Yeah, I can help you with grants and, and help you do that. I don't know if anybody here is a good grant writer that could fill in the blanks.
Something we need, actually. Um. You had your hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mary Jo.
I just, are you volunteering as a grant, as a grant writer?
Mary Jo, thank you. I just points, two points. One is the Sagatuck sign and the River Bluff Park are both in the township. So that would.
Fair point.
Our conversation.
That's right, yes.
They may be interested in the purchase as well. I can't speak for them, but they may be interested in this purchase as well. Um, also too, I would encourage. Parks and Public Works Committee or the city to, if we don't already have an inventory of all public art. To know where they are, exactly where they're placed.
Yeah, there, there's inventory that's been done.
Right.
And it has.
See that.
It has uh, the cost of the piece. It has everything about it. So we'll certainly pass that.
Yeah, I'd love to see.
Part of what we did this year.
Yeah, I think that, that helps me from a contextual standpoint. And I'm very protective of Oval Beach, Mount Baldhead Park. I, I think any additional. Sculptures or any kind of public art would have to be very thoughtful and thought through because uh, I mean, you just look at the picture that's posted right there. You can't improve that view. You really can't improve that. And you know, the sculpture, whether you like it or not aside, I think adding something else to that viewscape, I think would detract from it personally. That's my personal opinion. Uh, people come here for the visual beauty. They also come here for the art, but the art's got an appropriate spot. That's the reason I asked about the inventory. Let's see where, because it was uh, Art, Art Round Town, I think was the project that um, Gail and.
Rick.
Yeah, Gail and Rick. And I was heavily involved with that when they came to town uh, back in the um, uh, mid nineties. Fantastic job and they really kicked this all off.
Yeah, for, for reasons.
Yeah.
There was a lot.
Time now, but, but again, they really kind of.
A long time.
Spearheaded getting what we see today out there, so.
Right.
Just a few.
And we've been working, we've been working with them. They are officially retired.
Right.
For all sorts of reasons, but they're very supportive of the whole idea of adding and, and making sure you keep track of it.
Please say hello to them when you talk with them.
I will, I will.
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing from the council is, you know, that, you know, we have some different ideas on location, but I, I haven't heard anybody say. No, we don't want another piece of wonderful public art. I haven't heard anybody say that.
No.
And I, I heard from you, uh, so a willingness maybe to work, to, to be the most logical entity to work with would be the Parks and Public Works Committee. Helen, if that sounds okay to you.
I think that we need to address the monetary issue.
Yes.
Would be so, and that's always going to be from council instead of PPW, right? Because even if you had something, they would have to bring it to council. So I think we need to get that sorted and then uh, and then we can put that on the plate.
Could, does this sound okay to you, Mary Jo, to work with PPW and then PPW maybe could bring us a recommendation with, you know. Having worked with you on, you know, what it would cost and where it might go. And then we could take it from there. I, I, I think we're very much heading toward a yes, but the funding piece, the location piece, possible uh. Try community communication to the, cooperation to the point about the, one of the signs and one of the locate, or two of the locations. the funding piece, the location piece, possible uh, try community communication to the, cooperation to the point about the, one of the signs and one of the locate, or two of the locations. Do, do you mind stay, staying engaged with us on this? Cause I, I think we'd, we'd like to find a way to make it happen, but there's a few little things we'd like to-
We have a PPW meeting Tuesday, so we can, in an address there. Okay.
Great. Sounds good.
Does this sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And now this K, this Dune Ridge update, is this basically taking us to item eight or? No, or is this the public Dune Ridge?
This is the, the, the public Dune Ridge discussion.
Okay, this is the-
The updates on the-
This is prior to closed session. Okay. Chris, you have the floor.
We were just gonna, uh, we sort of put two things, cause I already knew that I was coming. And then we um, have items that we also want to discuss. John Brennan's here from our office as well that we want to do in closed session. But we did just want to give a general update, cause we had forwarded quite a bit of information to the city manager to pass on to city council. We're specifically talking about sort of just a general status update on the Dune Ridge pieces that the city council has authorized. So of the four original proceedings that were being pursued for Dune Ridge, there was an appeal. You also have what we sort of call the original action in our files, which was the action where Dune Ridge filed suit against the city, making claims largely related to the land swap agreement. And then in addition to that, um, there is a case that is pending that hasn't had a lot of activity. There's actually a motion for summary disposition that will be coming up. That relates to electrical panel that's at four, four, three Park Street. And the ability for that electrical panel to be turned on and for a final inspection to occur. And then of course, the fourth sort of related proceeding that's under this umbrella is a um, Eagle proceeding where we filed a motion to intervene to get involved in a contested case with Eagle related to four, four, three Park Street. That motion's been filed. We did send the, the final copies to uh, city manager to send on to council. There has been a response. It will get set for a hearing, although the response is essentially, as we indicated, I think to the city, no objection. So we'll see how that case sort of proceeds forward. Again, electric case is sort of sitting there. There'll be final dispositive motions. We're not sure exactly how the hearing's gonna work, cause as many of you are aware, Judge Kangis retired at the end of the month. And so we assume there's a visiting judge that's probably currently hearing matters and keeping the docket moving. We're not aware yet of actually who's getting appointed to replace his seat. We don't know if that's gonna impact that hearing date. So we'll, we'll keep you all apprised through the city manager and the mayor as we have. Um, and then in the original action, I think for purposes of just updating you, um, there was seven motions, I think, that were pending as we had briefed you all on before. Um, and the judge has entered orders on all of them. And essentially, some pretty significant issues, including um, qualified immunity for the city itself, or sorry, just immunity generally for the city was denied. It's an issue that we want to update council on as it relates to, the appeal period is currently now running on that claim. And then in addition to that, there were orders issued um, indicating um, some favorable rulings for the city that based on communications from Dune Ridge's council, we think that they will probably be looking um, to attempt to appeal those to the Michigan Court of Appeals. Uh, while we sort of advise the city on other items that it may want to appeal. So that's the general um, sort of framework where we're at. Of the four cases, one is closed out. The electric case is sort of um, sitting there, getting processed, but it, it may get sort of bumped later and it only kind of impacts the electrical permit. That intervention issue you just sort of authorized probably a month ago. So that is early on. We're waiting for a ruling from the A L J. And then of course, we have a closed session that's on um, this work sessions agenda to update you about uh, additional items that we've received related to the original matter.
Thank you, uh, Chris. Anything you'd like to ask Chris before we go into closed session? No? Okay. Uh, I think it's item seven, public comment, uh, open forum. I don't see anyone in the audience wishing to offer public comment since nobody's here. Uh, anybody on the Zoom call that wishes to offer public comment? It's only a handful of you. No. Uh, that closes item seven, public comment. Uh, we, we have an item here, uh, eight, it's for closed session. It has a sample motion, but pursuant to M C L fifteen dot two, six, eight E and H to discuss confidential written legal opinion regarding the ongoing lawsuit with Dune Ridge S A L P. There is a motion before the council to go into closed session.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Gar.
Motion to enter closed session to discuss confidential written legal opinion regarding the ongoing lawsuit with Dune Ridge S A L P.
Second.
Motion Lewis, second Stanton. This is a roll call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lemancy, or I'm sorry, Baldwin?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Yes. Dean. Yes. Yes. Motion carries. Uh, we are now entering closed session. Uh, would the clerk please shut off the Zoom? All right, we are back in open session. Sagatuck City Council Workshop, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're at item nine correspondence. We have an item from uh, G Corps One Stop, and you'll find it on page fifty-three. Uh, that takes us to council comments. Uh, Garnet, would you like to start with council comments?
Thank you.
Russ, over to you.
I'm glad. Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Uh, nothing from, nothing from Holly Leo, anything from Helen?
Uh, I, I actually was hoping to thank Elegant County Sheriff. We had, our cars got broken into outside our home. My neighbors and my cars. Yeah.
Oh, no.
Middle of the night, Monday night. And um, I mean, I just called, they just came through, it must've been kids. They came through, rummaged through the council. All the contents were out on the thing or whatever, but it was discour, you know, discouraging or a little bit, but anyway. I called just to kind of let Oakland, Elegant County know. And they sent a trooper out. I mean, he fingerprinted my car, which I was like, that was a lot, but I'm just like, you know, that's kind of you. I appreciate it. But um, yes, so if the hooligans are on the Zoom, uh, know that they're on to you.
Not to ask it, not to ask if you're using kind of big city or small town behavior. Were they locked?
No, they were not locked. That's what, so that's what I went out. I'm like, what do I, I get what it is. Now, when I lived in Pleasant Ridge, that happened all the time. You got out and you were like, I was a dumbass that didn't lock my car, but no. I got out today. I'm like, oh my God. I mean, it was a little bit weird. So but, and, and also we live in the fancier part of Sagatuck where like that happens down here. Doesn't happen on River West.
I'll add my comment is, is lock your cars, everybody, even in Sagatuck.
Exactly, yes.
My family thinks I'm nuts because I got Chicago habits and I lock the doors of the house. I lock the doors. I've locked my daughter out. I'm like, hey, old, old habits die hard. So
So no, it wa, it was kind of, but yeah, them just sending a sheriff out and stuff, I thought was really nice. I thought it was overkill, but I was glad to see our public tax dollars hard at work. Yes.
Excellent. That was awesome. That, that was my comment. Lock your doors. Um, it's it'd be safe out.
At least they weren't.
So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, motion Stanton, second. I'll, I'll give it to Gardner. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Adjourn.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.